Alright ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. This is Night City Council and council is in session. I am John John the Wise. I have with me none other than the honorary mayor himself, the mayor of Balance Town, James Hut. How are you, James?
Honorable mayor.
The honorable.
Very much the real mayor.
Wait, is honorary not the same honorary means like you're there in place?
Yes.
Gotcha, gotcha honorable. Well, I don't know. I don't want to go too far and say honorable. I mean, you know.
Thanks for having me, John John. It's always a pleasure.
Yep, it's always a pleasure having you. Thank you so much, James. I look forward to this every month.
As you are.
Today we have a very fun DLC to talk about. It was released, was it released on Valentine's Day?
The Friday after.
The Friday after.
Friday release schedule.
Yeah, which hey, it's all good. It's a, it's one of the longest DLCs you guys have made for sure. Fifteen pages is called Digital Dating in the Dark Future. By written, writing and designed by James and Jay Gray. Shout out to Jay Gray.
Shout out to Jay.
You guys put something, yeah.
Amazing.
Layout editing Jay Gray, I mean, if he's just like, uh, he's like the golden nugget. You need him.
Oh, we do, we do, we do every day.
Yeah.
Anyway, uh, and, and he always rises to the occasion. Both things you do to do.
Yeah. Loves the community.
And then they rise.
Yeah, you need and they right, got it, got it, got it. You put them in a dark place and they rise.
You cover them with cellophane?
And they rise. Oh man, that's great. Anyway, hope you guys are having a good time. Uh, we have a, we actually only have two questions. In left in the list. We've gone through, I'm gonna look at it exactly. Yeah, sev- if, after we answer these two questions, it'll be seventy-four questions that we have answered. In the Night City Council, pretty close to a hundred.
Hmm.
Which if you guys have more questions, make sure you go email me johnjohnthewise@gmail.com in the subject, but question for James. And I'm more than happy to add it to the list. And for some of you that have messaged me, I've given, some people have messaged me about questions that we've already answered and I've already. I just go ahead and let them know like, hey, this was already answered. Here's the answer. Um, so for those people, thank you for sending your questions anyway. I really appreciate that kind of interaction. So just keep them coming if you have more, you know what I mean? So, uh, let's get straight into it, James. Why don't we talk about the dating DLC? Give us an idea of what you, what you guys wanted to do with this thing. What was the idea behind it? The inspiration?
So, um, I wanted to write a life path. Some days you just, you get up in the morning and you think. It's a day to do a life path. Um, I was sick and tired of everybody else getting have fun doing a life path. And, uh, so I resolved to do one myself. That's why we have this. Uh, then I was like, oh, it's gonna be coming out in February. Hey, I think this might be cool. Um, and I sort of went with it and what it turned into is a great way to put NPCs in your game. And have your players choose to connect with them. Right? Um, there's two secret sauces here. The first secret sauce is this is an option. That your players can roll. So they're choosing to do this essentially. Um, so you already have immediate buy, right? Um. You know, uh, which is great. And then you get an NPC, you get a story, right? Um, and that helps you as a GM. It's almost like the, if you've ever jammed for a player playing a media. You'll know how amazing that is as a GM, just to have a media in, cause all of a sudden you get to. Push story beats in ways that aren't dead drops, or this guy told me this thing. You get to get your players really involved in the narrative.
Yeah, you have a perfect excuse to inject the plot of the story to your players because the media, that's their job basically.
Right. Here, this sort of lets anyone, um, call for a new NPC. You know what I mean? Um, this lets them go, hey, uh, I want to do this thing. And then it's kind of organic. As a GM, should you ever say no to somebody who wants to roll this table? Of course you shouldn't. You're gonna get a new toy out of it. Right? Or it's gonna be fun and funny and light. And, uh. I think that, uh, that's kind of, um, that's kind of interesting. It, it's just, um. It's a generator and what goes into it is a small amount of time. You have fun. Turning the, turning the lever and what comes out of it are, uh, tools for use as a game master. Um, for all those GMs out there, I recommend just telling people, hey, you wanted to do this. Here's how you could do this. Show it to them, you know, wave it in front of them a little bit, maybe print it out. Um, and then, uh. Maybe in the next two weeks, don't be surprised to be here. I want to try that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Definitely.
Those things that you kind of do have to introduce as, hey, this is okay. We can do this. Um. Anyway, I, I think it's not gonna break anything by long shot.
No, and actually I think if anything, it will enhance the storytelling, the cooperative storytelling that goes on. Uh, which is why I think it's such a cool tool. You've got, you guys have called it date path instead of life path, which is nice and clever. I like it. That's kind of stuff we like to see. And you basically, just like you roll on a.
Change a word with another word?
Yeah, that's it.
Seconds of my time, I.
Edgerunner, life path, date path. You know, I love it. It's, it's simple and it's, and it works. It just works.
Well, liferunners, it's time to run on the date.
Liferunners? Lifesavers, alright. So the thing that I like about this, this date path thing is you can use it for many different scenarios. I've already. Like three have popped up in my mind. Number one, during the life path scenario, let's say you do the romantic, uh, section. You have somebody that you had a romance with. Well, why don't we find out what the last date you guys were on was like? You roll this thing, see how it's like, and then at the end spoiler alert, but there's a part where. You choose, you roll to see if the date went well. Well, you guys can just choose for it to have gone poorly. As part of your life path, you know what I mean? That's one way. Another way. You guys are playing, you meet some, you, one of your players meets somebody, you guys don't really want to roleplay the awkward first date. But you wanna, you know, say, hey, I want to take this person out on a date. Alright, the next time we have downtime. You're, we're gonna do one of these dat- data, date paths as part of your downtime activities. That everybody does and makes, uh, what is it called? We're, uh, doing work? I forgot what we called it. In the book.
I, I believe it's, um, as hustle, you can.
Hustle.
It wouldn't take as long as hustle. Hustle is for weeks.
Yeah, a hustle is for a week. So one of the days of the week. Yeah, yeah, definitely. So you choose the, the one of the weeks and you go like, hey, we, I went out on a date basically.
You, it's not, this, this is not saying that it takes a whole hustle week from you if you want to do this thing. It's a.
Yeah, I wouldn't do that.
Right? It's a, um, I mean, as a player, you're not gonna get anything. You might get something out of it. But in turn, story power, but you're never gonna get like a new gun or whatever. They might. Give you a gift. It's gonna be like twenty bucks or something like with a buy dinner. In fact, you might even spend a little money. Um.
Yeah, if this is, this isn't really designed to like min max your character. It's more on the other side of the spectrum.
What I, what I mean to say is it will min max your enjoyment.
Yeah, that's for sure. So once we go through this, cause obviously we got some dice, you know, we love rolling on dice. Uh, we're gonna roll some stuff. Let's go on a date. Alright, so the way this thing is worked out. Is it, you make a match.
You go on a date, then I'll go on a date.
Okay, I'm gonna go on a date with my character, uh, Terminus. He's a netrunner. And we're gonna find out what kind of date he went on. He's an eccentric guy. And the way it works to me, it looks like it, it's kind of like a dating app, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you make a match and then the first, uh, on page three, you roll one D one hundred twice. Okay? So we got four. We got nine forty-nine. Alright, Hunt, this is, uh, the two keywords that your match used to describe themselves in their profile.
And this, this, this is by the way, this, this dating app is kind of an interesting new thing for lore reasons. Um, it's Ziggurat's dating app and, um, it's boiled down all this dumb, uh, profile stuff. Now you just get to put in keywords about yourself. They see a picture and, uh, that's, that's basically it.
Uh, I like that. So it's like, it's just straight data. It's just the numbers.
In fact, uh, the algorithm does most of the selecting for you because, uh, Ziggurat takes in your, um, search history. Into account when they choose people.
They know what you're into.
They know that you've been searching for. Cheap ammunition near me.
Nice. I like that. Alright, so I rolled forty-nine. That's independent. Second number is seventy-two. Which is optimistic, independent and optimistic. That's pretty good. Two qualities to have, you know, life is good. I'm on my own, but I can do it. What about you, James?
Oh, okay. Well, you give yours a first name first, then I'll roll mine.
Uh, oh, I have to give them a first name?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, uh. Uh, Wally Tableton.
Wall, Wally Tableton.
Yeah, Wally Tableton. I took him out on a nice little date.
Alright, alright. Uh, I got twenty-six. And seventy-two.
Alright, twenty-six is drinking and seventy-two also optimistic.
Optimistic, also likes to drink. I like how this is going. Uh, this is, um, Maribel, which is gonna go with our bell.
Maribel, alright. She's like Madonna. She's only got one name.
Well, actually, that doesn't have last names, so all you know, the first name.
That's right. That's right. We got handles. This is the dark future. So basically you're gonna have the most fun. I don't know what's going on with my date. I just know they're independent and optimistic, but you know, yours likes to have a good time. So let's see what happens. Where is your date? Roll evens or odds, then one D ten to find your date's location. Alright. Uh, evens.
I got odds.
Okay, odds, um, and then you roll one D ten, right? So I got even and I got six. So mine is Haywood Industrial Zone.
I have odd ten.
And yours is Pacifica Playground.
Oh, boy!
Is that like a legitimate playground?
No, the Pacifica Playground, you know where that is. That's the amusement park that turns into Pacifica.
That's right. That's right. That's right. Oh, yeah. I know that so well. By the way, links, the, it says go to page, blah, blah, blah. You click on it. It takes you to the page. How cool is that?
Like the whole thing, cause it's a, it's, it's literally, the whole thing is a fifteen-page life path.
Oh, that's so cool. Alright, let's go to the Haywood Industrial Zone. Clicking there, uh, and I will roll one D six. Your date might have a connection to Giraffa. Roll one D six. It's a one. They want to show you their latest piece of urban art. Okay, urban art. So they're artistic, they're independent, they're optimistic. So far eccentric enough that, that Terminus would probably like this person a little bit, but still hard to tell if they're, they're lame.
Fair enough, fair enough. It could be bad. The art could be.
Exactly. Pacifica Playground, uh, where are we? Oh, here we go. Roll me one D six.
That would be a six.
Alright.
Hot tonight, ten.
I know. And, uh, you're going drag racing down the pier, down by the pier. That's, that's awesome. That's fun. That's interesting because one of my, uh, campaigns began. One of the stories began where there was a drag race happening at the pier. It's like that parallel thinking kind of thing going on. I love that. Alright.
Do it here.
That's it. You're drinking at the pier, at the pier, you're drag racing, always a great combination in cyberpunk, not a great combination in real life. And so let's see, how does your date go? The time has come for your date, but it will be a good one. Will it be a good one or a weird one? Roll one D ten. Alright? I got a ten. You've been ghosted. They don't show up and never, you never learn why. Oh, Terminus wouldn't let this happen to them.
I got a four.
You got a four. You have a good date. Alright, so my date is over. I got, I didn't have a date. Dude.
But we'll, we'll roll you another date after.
No, alright, I'm off, I'm off dating apps, okay?
People want to see this.
I'm off. I'm off dating apps, alright? That's it. It's not for me, alright? Love is not for me. It's not happening. I just got ghosted in the Haywood Industrial Zone. By some lame Wally Tableton who thinks he's an artist and he just left me out, ghosted me dude.
This art, come see this art. They never show up. You got, so you can get ghosted several times in the life path. Get ghosted at the end where they like, yeah, I'd love to go on another date and you never hear. Also get ghosted, um, right as you did. Um, and then I think there are some other, there's some other stuff that's weird in there. But yeah, it's funny. It doesn't always end well.
That's so funny. Alright, well, let's, you know, you, you had a good date at least. So let's make sure that your date went well. Uh, good date beginning. Why don't you roll me one D six? I love the weird date. That's, that's interesting.
Yeah, well, I wanted to have bad dates, but then I realized it's much more cool to have weird dates. I got a four.
Alright, four again. You immediately discover something you have in common. Is it the drinking?
Drinking.
What happens in the middle? Roll me another one D six.
I, I think Jericho very much likes to drink.
Okay.
Um, in the middle, we got a D six, I got a five.
You, they surprise you with twenty Eddies. Remember when you said? You literally said they might give you twenty bucks. They gave you twenty bucks, a gift.
Twenty bucks, something worth twenty.
A gift of the GM's choosing that's worth twenty bucks, twenty Eddies.
Hey, what they give me GM's choosing?
Uh, si- a bag of synth coke.
Excellent.
There you go.
Great. Uh, how about the, um. Synth coke's twenty bucks, right?
I think it is. That's why I picked it.
Fair enough.
I'm pretty sure it is.
Trying to remember.
But I can't remember if it's fifty or a hundred. It could be a hundred.
It's fine. It's, I can't.
It's bad synth coke.
I know. Um, end of the day, right?
Yeah, end of the day. Let's see what happens. I can't believe I got ghosted. I'm still not over it.
Five?
Five, alright. You learn about one of their great talents, GM's choice. They have a base sixteen in the appropriate skill. Dude, uh, well, you guys went to a drag race show. I think Maribel, maybe she drives, drive sixteen?
That's dope.
Right?
Um, sounds good. Maybe a nomad.
Yeah, maybe a nomad.
So the cool part is at this point, it's like, oh, what, uh, what is this person? You know, how can I use this character? This is a real, this Maribel, we just rolled them up kind of. It's a date between me and this NPC, but. Really all it is is learning about the NPC and going, would I be interested in that? Cause. One important thing, whenever you're going on, um, whenever you're doing anything romantically. Uh, on the table is one, keep it class.
Mm-hmm.
Two, uh, it's really, you never want to, as a GM, prescribe how a player's character feels about a situation. Uh, you could tell them, hey, here's what, here's something and then they get to have a reaction to it and that deepens their roleplay.
Yeah, I agree with you wholeheartedly on that. Uh, this is actually crazy, cause Maribel. Sounds like such a good time. That's wife material, dude. Drinking, drag racing.
Oh, no, we, we know what happened at the beginning, middle and the end of the day, but we don't know how it ends up.
Exactly.
So let's not keep them in suspense.
You're right. We, we're at the end. This is a post-date review. Do they say they want another date? Roll evens or odds. If evens, they say they want. If odds, they're just not that into you. Alright, and if you get evens, you get, go to aftermath, which is cool.
Five, I got odds.
You got odds. They're just not into you and beg off, either start over with a new date or stop dating for a while. Oh, man, the DLC tells you to stop dating for.
Ah.
You just couldn't keep up with Maribel, dude.
That's, that's rough. That's rough.
Yeah, you just couldn't keep up. She was just too cool for you. She was obviously way too cool.
No, I've been on that.
That it hit too close to home?
Hearing, some people hearing that will be like, oh, man, I, I know how that feels. Ouch.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you know, look, we all have our strengths. Uh, drinking and drag racing might not be our strengths.
Throw the coke away. I'm not sure about that.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, but if, let's say you had rolled evens, let's just, you know, let's all like talk about what it could have been with Maribel.
Moving on.
Alright, fine. You know what? I, I respect that. But let's say if you guys didn't, you would go to an aftermath, you roll one D ten. And on a one to an eight, you haven't been ghosted and they'll contact you again. Go to the start of a new romance, question mark.
Right, yeah. Um, so that's the part where this, that's the job of this calculator is now done. Because Maribel should now exist in the mind of the GM. Uh. You saw it happen live. Uh, John John was like, oh, this person sounds great. I wonder all these other stuff they're gonna do.
Ghosted.
Yeah, but. The fun part is if you get ghosted here, there's no reason they can't show up again, something else. You know? Can run into people you went on a date with that one time. This could be tied the way of. Okay, I know one of you has a rocker boy in their party that is doing stuff and they never meet anybody that would like, you know. Uh, NP, like they're carousing character, right? They should have more characters. They have gone on dates with. But then didn't move forward with. This is perfectly great way to allow that story to occur without, you know. Uh, hefty fade to black.
Yeah.
Vampire the Master-esque content.
It's also great because, uh, you don't have to think about anything. All the ideas are here. You just roll some dice and it'll give you enough inspiration like it did just now. I mean, we pick, I, I saw the whole thing. Me going to the Haywood Industrial Zone, looking at my agent. And it's like, it's five minutes passed, ten minutes passed, ghosted.
Yeah, it's, uh, this is, this is one of those things where, uh, this is the reason we love life path, right? Um, it's a flowchart for fun.
Mm-hmm.
The nerdiest sentence in the history of all.
Date, this dating DLC is a flowchart of fun.
Oh, boy!
Oh gee, golly, willikers.
Time, gee. But yeah, uh, there's a toyetic quality to all of this. You can just, you don't have to play this. In, on your table. You could just go get this DLC for. For, for, they're free, right?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Let me check the price. Let me go to the website, check my cart. Uh, there's nothing in it. So yep, it was free.
Yeah, totally free.
Yeah, completely free.
Every DLC we've ever done for almost a year now, right? Two years?
Free DLCs.
Free DLCs, all on the website. You can get it all for free.
What a concept.
That they're not gonna pay anyone. That's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I, it's just such a great deal. I lost my train of thought.
Well, I think what you were trying to say is now that this character exists in the world. It's a great way for the game master to have inspiration on how they can engage your character. Cause that's what, that's what you always want, right? You want some way to connect to the players at your table. You want to throw something at them that will get them engaged, you know? Maybe they don't go like dive both feet in or, you know, whatever. But it's something to pique their interest.
It's a, it's the, the grand fantasy of being a game master is that you'll say something so brilliant. That somebody at the table will smile and. Essentially that one of your students will raise their hand in class.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? And ask you a question. Uh, you always want to throw something out that causes them to throw something out, that causes somebody else to throw something out until you have this great avalanche chain reaction of fun. Um. And, uh, this is, this is a way of, uh, creating those hooks. That aren't like, oh, I have to really come up with what this person would want. This is a way you can just lift out, maybe you want to do this. And there is a type of social character that really wants to do this. And if you tell your players, hey, this is on the table. You can do this whenever you want. Uh, then, uh, I wouldn't so much worry about them abusing it, cause what they're abusing is. Uh, secretly something for you, not.
Yeah, no, this, this, this DLC is.
But it's also healthy for them. It's like us, it's like macaroni and cheese with a serving of vegetables in every, uh.
To balance it out.
In every bowl, of course.
Yeah. Broccoli and mac and cheese is, is fire, dude.
It is, it is. Uh, they also, uh, the mac and cheese that has the, um, little beta carotene in it.
Okay. Okay, I had no idea about this. The more you learn. What's that?
Improve your perception score.
Oh, that's, that's nice. Oh, man. Perception plus one from mac and cheese. That's like the most video gamey thing.
Spot weakness.
I love it. This mac and cheese makes me better.
The weakness is the mac and cheese is too creamy. It's a. Where are we? Where are we?
Where are you going with this, Jay?
Ask us some questions sometime?
Yeah, we're gonna answer some questions. But if you guys want to check out this DLC, as I said, um. It's a great way to make characters, to connect your characters to people in their life path. You can use this in downtime and it's just fun. It's fun to do. Especially if you have some kind of like eccentric character that's dating people left and right. You don't have to per se roleplay all the, all the dates and stuff. You just roll on something like this. We all kumbaya, laugh and craft the story together, basically.
Yeah, and roll it on, roll it on the table with everybody else nearby. It's fun.
Yeah.
You know, if they enjoy watching you netrun, they'll enjoy this a lot more.
Yeah, for sure. This is a way better than watching someone netrun.
Hey, I mean, this is, this is good shit.
Yeah, especially when you get ghosted and everyone can just make fun of you.
I don't, don't make fun of John John in the comments, okay? We both. In a way, his was, his was a lot, uh, nicer. I get to have a great time and I gotta deal with this aftermath emotion.
Yeah, but she's not ghosting you. She's just like, hey, I'm not into you. We can be friends. At least you can be friends.
We were gonna have a life together, man.
Uh, that's what you thought, but she was like, you're not, you can't keep up with me.
Drives too fast.
She's like, come on, man. You're not even into drag racing and drinking like I am.
I think it's something I did wrong personally.
You probably, you blew it. I mean, we weren't there, but you blew it.
I probably did. Anyway, um.
Alright, let's answer some questions. Uh, and by some questions, uh, we got two questions and we have completed all of the questions for Night City Council. So this is from JKL. I don't know what that stands for, but it is from JKL. My PCs have purchased a portable net architecture backpack size and a demon. They're planning on using it to control a. A ground drone they stole from a corp. What is the range of the drone from the backpack net architecture?
Um, so drone ranges, uh, are not stated in the book.
Is it in the, the, what's it called? Interface?
Interface?
Yeah.
No, he's asking the range of the physical drone, the range that the drone can go away from the portable net arc.
Yeah, I'm asking because of the, didn't you guys add it to this DLC or is it a different one?
I don't believe we, we have stated ranges on almost every drone in the core book.
Gotcha.
The reason is because they're not, they're designed to patrol an area. What you'll find very quickly, um. A venerable GM who asked this question, um, is that you want that range to be. Within reason, the phrase within reason. Um, obviously. If they're starting to tell the drone to go into buildings and do the whole building by itself. One, the drone will not survive that process. I get it. Um, two. They'll probably want to go in with the drone to make sure it does survive the process. Or three, they want to use it to scout, in which case scout the general area. Don't let it go far. You know what I mean? Because at the end of the day. Content that does not directly involve a player character is less interesting to them. This is why people don't like netrunning at their table. Sometimes personally, I love netrunning and the more you. Understand the rules of cyberpunk, the more you'll enjoy netrunning. Um, the also the faster you get enjoying netrunning. Um, both of those go actually hand in hand. The faster you're. Um, both of those go actually hand in hand. The faster you're netrunning, the more you're enjoying it likely.
I've noticed that players like netrunning at, at the table because they wanna know what's on that next floor, what's, what's next, you know, that, it intrigues them as well.
Yes, that was, that was one of the hardest parts with designing the netrunning system is how do I make this actually, um, moment to moment gameplay fun? And I went for, let's roll dice a lot, unopposed a lot.
Yeah.
That creates a lot of dynamic decision making.
Uh, if I may offer, uh, some ideas, this is from the Interface Red Volume One. Uh, it had, there is a DLC in there that is exclusive to the Interface Mag, uh, magazine or booklet. It's not even a magazine anymore. But, uh, the, there is a whole section about drones called All About Drones. And in this section, the stats of these drones are written under the data section. Some of them are listed as six move, eight move, one move, and this is their move stat. So as we all know, one move equals two meters of distance.
If you're on a grid.
Exactly, or one square if you're on a grid. So if it's, uh, if they have a six move, that's a twelve meter movement. Now, that doesn't say specifically that that is their maximum range. But it, maybe it can give you a educated guess on how far they can go. You know, maybe three times their move is their range, maximum range, something like that.
Oh, I will, I will say that it's designed as a narrative contrivance. Um, for the reason that, um, as a GM, you should be able to say. Yeah, it's at the edge of its range to just curtail that line of inquiry. I know what you want is a hard and fast number, but here, hear me on this. Here a hard and fast number is not the best option.
Yeah, I agree.
If a hard and fast number is coming in a future book that's black and has chrome on it.
Hmm, I wonder what that means. But definitely I agree with you, James, on this because really, what is the drone serving? If your player's like, hey, I wanna use this drone to scout an area, then let them scout the area, you know what I mean?
Then it doesn't.
It does it, it does that, uh, you know, you still have to roll perception checks to see what's on the screen, to see if you notice stuff. And then you also have to be careful that the enemies don't spot the drone. You know, as, so the range and stuff like that, you can use kind of common sense. There'll be like an indicator that'll say, hey, you're getting to the max range. If you wanna go further than this, you have run the risk of the drone falling out of the sky.
And added to this, if they're controlling it via demon. Uh, the demon is only going to be able to a- answer to very specific lines of quest, lines of action.
Yeah.
If they're controlling it physically, I'd give it a little bit more leeway of what to do, like jump over there, then do something. If it's controlled by a demon, you can say. What's your input? Scout.
Yeah.
And then it, it, you know, it's, it's, um, its head goes, you know.
Patrol.
Patrol.
Yeah. Go over there, patrol, or you might say hover. Hover and record, record movement, look for movement, you know, stuff like that. If you have a thermal camera on it, you just have it hover over a building or something.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, it's, the possibilities there are endless. Um, so definitely I would say, and I think James says the same thing, use your own common sense for something like that, or your own discretion. Alright, uh, last question, this is from Lomis, one of the awesome creators and coders. And testers of the Foundry VTT Cyberpunk Red System. So shout out to you guys, thank you so much. Is cyber tech skill the only skill that can be used to quick fix or treatment for section of the body that is replaced with cyberware? Or it is, is it an additional option for first aid, paramedic surgery, and you can always use any of them?
It's, it's an additional option. Um. So, uh, cyberware is, um. Is. If you have training in surgery, you have training doing surgery on people with cybernetics. Um, at this point, it's taught in the medical school. Uh, so you can, um, you have the opportunity however to use, um, I believe you can use cyber tech instead of some of these skills. In certain circumstances, when it, to fix a broken cyberarm that happens to be on me, on my person. Still the same thing. Um, the reason being there is that, you know, sort of medical technique. Medical technology and technology have a overlap. And, uh, techs and med techs used to be. I mean, they both have the word tech in there.
Exactly.
Med techs in twenty twenty were just an offshoot of techs.
Yeah, the idea was that they just were really proficient in using the type of technology that the future had. For like first aid and medical stuff.
Yep, and, uh, so there are overlaps of what techs and med techs do in some areas, and that is by design.
Yeah. Cool, alright, there you go.
It is the an addition to. It's not a must, it's an addition to.
Yeah, there's been a lot of instances in my own home games where, uh, more than one skill can be used for a certain situation. Like, one of the most common ones that I say is either roll streetwise or local expert. Whichever you want to choose, cause either way, you're gonna find a piece of, the piece of information. It's just how do you find it? Do you find it through the street? Or do you find it through just knowing your area?
Yeah, they're different, they're different ideas in terms, one's a knowledge skill and one's more of like a, um. Streetwise is a, um, is more of a perception skill for situations going sideways. Um, like, I call it for streetwise when there's, when you've done something that angered a gang. For example, and someone's just gone off to tell, hey, these people are here, you should go deal with this, this is your turf, man. Uh.
Nice.
The, um, the streetwise check is, did you notice the guy run off with a phone in his hand?
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah, I, I've used it where like my group got ambushed. They killed everybody and then when they're looking over the bodies to see who the hell are these people. They see insignias and symbols on their, you know, uniform. You know, streetwise or local expert to see if you know anything about this, or, you know, their gear or how they act. Maybe it'll give you some kind of story.
For sure, for sure. I, I would say, uh, it's all, it's all valid as long as it, uh, produces the game states that you wanna produce in your game. You know what I mean? As long as the players are having fun and the game is proceeding as planned. Planned.
Yeah.
Uh, the game is, the game is proceeding at a steady clip and everyone's enjoying themselves. I'd say that's your time to try something new, right?
Well, how about this idea?
Going well. You know, and, uh, you've issues with like people not really being into it, that's when you get to the basics and you, you play by the book more. The more fun your players are having, the more room you have for possession.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, the fun should be directing, the, the, every time your characters are laughing and having a good time, you, that means you're hitting the right note, so just keep playing that note. You know what I mean? Until that note doesn't work anymore, then you can move on to some other stuff. Uh, what about this? Uh, sometimes when I offer multiple skills for something, like let's say in this example, using cyberware, paramedic surgery. Each one of them has a different difficulty value, a different DV in my mind. One of them would, if you know this skill, it's a lower difficulty value, uh, I'm just supposing, let's say.
No, that's, that's a smart way to think about it, cause there are some skills that would be just perfect for this scenario. Uh, and, um. There are other skills that could have a benefit. Uh, sometimes I'll, I'll come down on it like, no, you gotta use this skill for it. But if you use another skill, you get a plus one.
Mm-hmm, complimentary skill.
All of this, we're talking about the, the thing with the GM tells you the skill that you have to roll. Um, my favorite thing to hear in response is, well, I wanna go do something else. In the immediate scene, right? Uh, with a different skill, because they've um, you've, you've tricked them, you've completely ambuzzled the player at that point. Um, it's your win, uh, game, set, match, the player has decided to A, use one of their skills to infect, to infect. Ugh, to interact with the environment. Um, two, uh, they've taken the reins of play, which is always something you're dangling in front of them. And three. Wow, now they're, who thought of that idea, huh?
Yeah. Exactly.
Uh, anytime, anytime they wanna do anything like that, immediately jump on it, you know what I mean? And the more you reward that by rewarding it with your energy and effort and being like, oh, that sounds great, let's go forward with that. So, you, you, so these people are coming and you're trying to hide, but there's, there's a door nearby and you wanna pick it open? That sounds great. You know what I mean?
Yeah, then, then all you're thinking about is, oh man, what do I put behind that door?
Right, exactly, exactly. You gotta, you gotta worry about that, um, I don't know. I, these are all hypotheticals, of course, but I guarantee it will happen if you keep an eye out for this type of thing. Um, you'll have certain players that act like this. Or, um. You know. And, of course, they're godsend, they, they might also, you know, what is the dream? They're also playing a media and, uh, they used the dating DLC this morning. Sounds great.
Yeah, I've always found that the players, they just wanna feel useful. You know what I mean? When a situation comes up and they're trying to figure out a solution. The first thing they do is look at their skills to try to give them a clue on how to solve the situation or the obstacle that's in front of them. So, I would, I always try to see where they're coming from when they offer something. You know, like, hey, can I use bureaucracy here? I always go, okay, where, where are they trying to come from? How can I ma- make this work? So.
There's, um, and if you, if you don't get the, where they're going with this. Um, I, my back pocket is, okay, what do you do?
Yeah.
Boom.
Yeah, how, how does it look? What do you do? Yeah, I definitely, I've asked that a bunch of times.
We'll drain them if you keep, if you do it to the same player twice in a row, they're like, I'm not a GM, uh. But you could do it once.
Yeah. Um.
Uh, so that was the question.
That was the question, we're pretty much done, um, but how about we do something special or something surprise, like that I didn't even talk to you about?
Okay, I'm ready for surprises.
I think people would enjoy this, uh, why don't we talk about like our last game that we played? Um, how it went, it doesn't have to be cyberpunk, any kind of tabletop RPG game. Anything that surprised you, what was the last tabletop RPG game that you played? And don't tell me it was that, the last time you were at the convention, cause that'll make me sad.
No, 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 I, I play weekly multiple times.
Okay, good, thank God.
Games.
So ta- tell me about your last session, what were you playing, what were you, how did it go?
Um, I was playing some D and D, uh, and, uh, I, they were on a snowy mountaintop. Um, they'd be given this, uh, this, uh, this job, um, I'm doing a D and D thing where I do like three sessions and then that's the end of that story and we'll do new characters, three sections. Beginning, middle and end, and not one, like three shots.
Three shots.
It's, it's been really good for the newer players I have. Um, one thing I love doing is playing with brand new players.
Love it.
Because I got a bunch of market research out of it, and it's, it's great for nerdy reasons, they're also great.
No, they're the best, they're the be- they're the best kind of players because they have no preconceived notion on what they're supposed to do. So they always surprise you with something creative and fun that you never in a million years would have thought of.
You wouldn't believe the standard that these new players hold me to. They, they think that, they think that I'm like a normal GM and like, they're like, what do you mean? There's no custom stat blocks this week? I've been written three new Par magic items this week? What are you doing?
What are you doing, man?
A basic bugbear? No, um.
That's funny.
No, 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 I, I love it, I love it, but, uh, they're, they're trying to annihilate all of this cult. Um, they live on a snowy mountaintop, they've got like the cliffside, uh, octagonal temple thing going on. Um, and, um. They're poachers, they're poaching a nearby valley of dragons. Um, you're not allowed to poach female dragon and baby dragons. Um, because, uh, for the same reason, you're not allowed to do that to deer.
They're in danger, or it's not, not in season.
Uh, not in season, right? And, um. Because, you know, the, the nation or whatever is trying to conserve the dragon scale resources, cause it's a strategic resource, right? Armor, stuff like that. Um, and they go there and one of them gets trapped in a snowstorm, AKA didn't show up last week. Uh.
Nice.
This one, uh, the, the others get there and they just start, uh, wrecking, rampaging and whatnot. And they cast friends on one of them and, uh, they, they make casual conversations, say, yeah, the hunting party are best guys. They all, um, they're all out doing poaching right now. They're all trying to poach this, this dragon, right? So, so they kill basically all of the like initiates and low ranking people and the high priest. Right? And they're like, our job is to annihilate all of them. And their four best members, the hunting party are coming back. So now it's a reverse situation, they were, they sieged a place and then they're like, oh, these people are coming back here.
Oh, no.
People, how do we use their traps that attacked us on the way in to defend ourselves on the way back?
Uh, that's smart, I like that. And they, they basically did that, right? They utilized the traps and and it went well.
Yes, it, it did, it went well, um, I had to, I do the thing where you're running out of time, it's the last day, we're not going to another week. How do I speed this up? Um, and, uh, introducing like people throwing high level magic, certain kinds of high level magic is a great way to speed up the end of the campaign.
Ooh.
But, uh, that was, that was what I did.
Nice, I like that idea, that's cool.
Got to put like, um, I did one thing where I had like a bottle. Um, that had a hole in it, like it was made in a hole. With a hole in the middle, and then they attached a chain through that hole, like a potion on the wall, like breaking case of fire type thing.
That's great.
A potion of giants, I liked that part, that was.
That's nice.
Anyway, what'd you do?
Awesome, that's fun, man. I love the idea of doing a three shot because you can actually progress and do something and you feel like you're not rushed for just one session, so I like that idea. Uh, for me, we, uh, my Patreon group is back, we're in full swing. The, for those of you that don't remember, uh, one of our players passed away. And so it was kind of hard for us to like get back, we had a good talk with each other and figured out where these characters were. So then the pressure was on me to basically ru- run a session that will get us back into it. And I di- I thought to myself, I thought to myself, you know what, man, let me just get back to the basics of what makes cyberpunk fun. And the session started with, like, they're in a bar, they're about to get into a bar fight. And do a drinking competition or, or something crazy like that. It's fun, everyone's laughing. And then I wanted to make sure that my players get straight into a new story and just get, just dive into it, you know what I mean? So I thought, what else but to have one of my players, uh, estranged father just appear right there in front of him. Uh, he's being, he's being, uh, dragged away in cuffs. Next to these other guys that look like hardcore solos. Um, or sorry, no, no, that's not what happened. He, he's just being dragged away in cuffs, right? So, my player sees this, he sees his own dad. And the, and I'm thinking to myself, alright, they'll go, this was my plan. They, they see the dad, they go to the cops and they say, hey, we wanna, you know, that's my dad, I wanna go talk to him and they say, okay, you can come by. And visitation hours is in like thirty minutes, come by in thirty minutes, have a chat with him if you want. But he's like, no, I wanna see him right now. And I'm like, okay, I didn't account for this. And, uh, long story short, he punches that cop in the face. Uh, other cops come and tackle him and then another one of the players comes and tries to help him, he gets punched in the face too, more cops come. And these guys are actually, they're in a nomad group, uh, they're, they're in a nomad encampment and those cops are part of that nomad encampment. They're like lawmen of the area. And, and they see them as like legends, these guys, you know, they've done so much for the, the nomad group. So they're like, dude, what the hell are you guys doing, you know? But they have to like tackle them and cuff them because they're attacking cops, you know? So they get. So they get thrown in jail with the dad and I'm like, alright, I gotta pause on you guys and go to these other guys. They go, you just witnessed your buddies get arrested. Cause they tried to brawl with some cops. And then they go, okay, well now we gotta get him out of jail. So now it's like a complete cluster F as they're trying to, I, I thought they were just gonna go and talk to the guy and try to figure out why he was arrested, but now it's like a whole ordeal of like, you're in jail, you gotta explain yourself, you know? All kinds of stuff like that. Anyway, they go and they visit the players and the dad in the jail. The dad's like, I'm a part of a secret corporate group. I do, I helped them do research and development with this other doctor that they're actually been looking for this entire time. He, he dropped, name drops that doctor too. And he says, I was taken out into the forest with a bunch of solos. They were about to kill me. And, uh, the security and escorts of this nomad group were, happened to be patrolling that area. They killed those guys and arrested me because they just didn't know who I was and decided lem- let's take him to, to jail to try to figure out what the hell's going on, right? So.
Save yourself, John John.
Exactly, exactly. So, so basically the, that happens and then while they're having this conversation, a group of max tech cops pull in and come inside and they go, okay, you guys gotta leave. We gotta take, take the prisoner. And they're like, uh, why are there, why isn't it just, yeah, why, why is max tech coming to take a prisoner? You know what I mean? They're suspicious. And something happens where the players are like, no, no, we're not letting this guy take, we're not letting him take it. So boom, fight breaks out. Have an amazing fight in the jail cell. And my idea was more reinforcements were gonna come in, so they gotta find a way out of here. But one of my players is, is, yeah, exactly. One of my players is a genius because he's actually part of a booster gang that lives in that area. And he said, I'm gonna hit up my gang and let them know like we need backup. And that causes a, uh, another cluster F as there's like a war going on outside of his booster gang shooting into the police station. The players are in a crazy battle that we had to like end it. And then the next time we came back, the next session, they picked up in that battle. Like that's how long the battle was, right?
Was it good?
Oh, it was good. The, the solo did solo stuff. He like, he shot someone in the head, killed him on with one shot.
Nice.
Yeah, and there, everyone was like, oh, thank God we have a solo again. You know, so it was, it was good. They did all that and, uh, long story short, they basically just got exiled from the nomad camp. Um, which is crazy because they were legends and then all of a sudden the police chief is like, the best I can do without putting you guys in prison is to just exile you right now until we figure out what the hell just happened. And that's where we left off basically.
Interesting.
Thoughts, comments?
I like it. It was, um, it's, it's cool. Uh, I can tell you rolled with the punches pretty early on and, um, stuck to, uh, I think you stuck to your guns about the, um, taking back to basics type thing. Um, you went to the life path. That's the, uh, that's the place you go when you take it back to basics as a cyberpunk, uh, GM. And, um, I like it. I like it. It sounds like you had a great time.
Oh, such a good time, man. It was, it was one of the best sessions we've ever had. Uh, it's, it just, and because it was so good, it felt even better because we were so sad before, not that long ago, that we, we needed something like this to get us back in the groove. And it's just good, man. All around good.
Well.
Yeah.
Rock on.
Rock on. And I hope you guys enjoyed that. Uh, maybe next time we'll do more of that. If you guys like it, let us know in the comments.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, uh.
We need some questions.
Yeah, we need some questions. John John the Wise at gmail dot com.
We will answer questions about anything related to cyberpunk rules. Um, GMing the game. It doesn't have to be like, is this rule this way? It's like, hey, my players are having a hard time doing this with my players, right? Uh, we can, we can provide GM, uh, GM aid as well as rules clarifications.
Dude, that's honestly the most fun.
A long time. And we love open ended questions or exploratory questions too. Um, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So bring them on, bring them on. We want to hear about.
Direct rules clarifications because they might be familiar with the system by now.
Exactly. I think we all know how to play cyberpunk now.
But, uh, yeah, open it, open it up. I'm ready to answer anything.
Yeah.
John John's help, anything.
Anything can be done. Alright guys, uh, stay tuned for some stuff coming up in the future with James. He's gonna be doing some fun stuff, uh, that we'll obviously talk about when the time comes. I got fun stuff coming too in the near future. John John the Wise at gmail dot com. That's where you guys could send me your questions. And yeah, we would love to hear about, you know, hey, I got my campaign, I got these ideas, help me. I mean, that's the kind of stuff we love talking about. So any of that, your campaign questions, player questions, player problems, GM problems, you know? We'd be happy to answer any of that stuff. Alright guys, uh, anything else you want to talk about, James, before we sign off?
No, I think that's about all for me. Uh, enjoy those, enjoy those DLCs. Everybody stay safe, stay healthy. Um, I'll see y'all next month.
Alright, don't get ghosted like me.
Don't, don't, don't get ghosted. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright. Roll the date path, put it in the comments. I want to read it.
Oh, yeah.
Do it.
Yeah, yeah. We want to hear about your dates. Alright?
Absolutely. That's a. Alright, cheers.
Alright guys, have a good one. Take care. Night City Council is adjourned.
Earned.